Good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 AM. We're going to call to order the Tuesday, September 8th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Would you please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And stay with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. At this time, we'll accept any public comment for items not appearing on today's agenda. We would welcome people to extend any public comment if they'd like to at this time. Please. Okay, yes, if you would be willing to join us here at the microphone and state your name and the municipality you live in, and we'll go from there. Good morning. And that'll allow our viewing audience at CNET to...
Oh, it's always going to be all right.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. No worries. Yeah.
My name is Robin Johnson. I've lived in Center County 38 years. I currently live in Brush Valley and enjoy my life in Center County very much. And I also want to thank you all for your service to our county. My concern today that brought me here is this scheduled event at Penn's Cave, the Antique Machinery Show. I have concerns about the safety to our community in regards to the COVID coronavirus. My concerns are just very strong in that regard, and I would like some explanations on why this is going forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Robin. We appreciate that. So it is always helpful for us to be able to give some guidance and some feedback when it comes to events occurring in the county, especially during COVID-19. We've had a lot of events that have been outdoor events that have occurred recently, and it's the same message across the board, which is events of 250 individuals or less are allowed outside. If there's social distancing, masking, hand hygiene that occurs, those events are allowed. If it goes over those events or goes over those thresholds, that would be the time when concerned citizens could reach out to the Department of Health to make them aware of events that are occurring in the communities that are exceeding those thresholds set by the governor. And they have a form that you can fill out online to make those concerns heard. We also, and this is again, if need be, but the contact can also be made to the Pennsylvania State Police, but that's going to be more of an educational in nature. They're going to, they're most likely going to come out to an event and be very educational, explain to the folks that are holding an event, here are the things that the Department of Health has outlined, and be very educational. It's not going to be enforcement at that point, but very educational. So those are the two options that, from the Department of Health standpoint, they've alerted us to as options that anybody could take. So it sounds like the Antique Machinery Show is not occurring yet, but you could always... Is that correct? It hasn't started, right?
Thursday, Thursday, fourth day.
Sure. So if there are concerns that the 250-person threshold is going to be exceeded, that's when you could...
Department of Health.
Yeah, reach out to those, to the Department of Health. But that, from my standpoint, that would be the best way to go about this. Yeah.
Department of Health.
Yes, yes, Department of Health, yes. And if you...
That's State of Pennsylvania Department of Health.
That's right.
We wouldn't have the Department of Health in Center County.
Yeah, yeah, the Pennsylvania one. Yeah, sure. No, thanks for your concern. We want to keep everybody safe and healthy. Absolutely. So thank you for being here today. Yeah, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you wanted to leave your email or any contact information, the Commissioner's office is right around the corner here. You can go in there, and Natalie would be happy to take your email and phone number if you'd want to keep in touch with us.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Well, that was my primary concern today, so I guess...
Okay, sure, sure. Okay, thank you very much, Robin, for being here.
Thank you all.
Have a nice day.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Take care. Okay, we wanted to see if there's any other public comment for anybody in the room or on the phone here today. Okay, we're seeing none. We will move to our minutes from our last meeting a week ago, September 1st. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from the September 1st Board of Commissioners meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. We have for County Relief Block Grant update, we're going to welcome up Mary Kay Williams at this time to give us update. Good morning, Mary Kay.
Good morning, everybody. I hope everybody's Labor Day was nice. Appreciate the great weather. And I have great news. The applications for the small businesses are coming in. We currently have 140 completed and 225 in progress. The in-progress just means that, you know, people are still working, so we're not sure if all 225 will come through, but we're at those numbers bring us to 365. And what I'm asking people, please, 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 apply. You have until this Friday, September 11th at 5:00 PM. The process is going very, very well. I've been working with Chad Joyce from IT and SBDC. We've run into some small snags here and there, but nothing that hasn't been able to be resolved very, very quickly as far as uploading documents and such. Small Business Development Center has been a great resource for us. So I'm going to, again, ask people to please apply, you know, for this, for the grant opportunity. It will, again, close Friday, September 11th, and I also want to, you know, make notice, and I know the Commissioners know this, if you have received a PPP or any other CARES Act money, you still can apply. This does not disqualify you at all. It just means that you would not be the first batch of checks, but it's very important for people to apply for that. And then the other piece of good news that I will talk about is on next Monday, September 14th through the 28th, we are going to be working on the nonprofit grant application. Molly Kunkel has been a really wonderful resource and help to work with. And so what is going to happen is all the nonprofit organizations will apply through. We'll have a link on our website, but it will go through to the Center Foundation, complete the application. It's going to be similar to the current application they have up there now, but it is going to be more focused to Center County government. They will then give us the information, and the Commissioners will be making the decisions on that. But if all goes well, that will be released, again, next Monday at 8:00 AM on September 14th, hoping to be able to present that at the Board of Commissioners meeting on Thursday. So I'll just see if there are any questions, or if many of my Commissioners want to mention or ask me anything, I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, feedback questions for Mary Kay?
I got a couple.
Sure, sure.
So, Mary Kay, I've actually visited every single retail business in downtown State College, in downtown Belfort, and in downtown Phillipsburg. Surprisingly, there were nearly as many retail businesses in Phillipsburg as there are in downtown Belfort, but there's about four times as many in downtown State College.
How are your shoes?
Worn out.
Yeah.
Because it took a couple dozen hours to do it.
Yes, she is.
Would really urge everyone to apply. There's $6 million available.
Thank you.
If you apply and you receive thousands of dollars, it means some of the other businesses get six bucks less. Please, if you're eligible, apply for the grant. The three Commissioners would love to help out practically every single business in Center County if we can. At this point, we were hoping to get maybe 800 to 1,000 applications. We're not quite even halfway to the 800.
Correct.
So please apply. Plenty of money available. Commissioners would love to help out all the small businesses in Center County.
Thank you. But we can't even reimburse you for any shoe leather. That's the...
No, that's okay. I'll just get a resole at that nice place in downtown State College across from the library.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah, as well as the nonprofit that you mentioned earlier, I think the school districts are part of this conversation, the educational folks, medical facilities, and also, I think, the municipalities. And so look forward to all three of those coming up in the not-too-distant future in those conversations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I don't know if, Margaret, if you wanted to mention anything about the municipalities or... Okay, all right. Thank you.
There's forms and applications, and they've been sent out.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mary Kay or...
Was that what, there's a script last week?
Yes, we did.
Was there a primary and overall riding concern you heard from them?
I think the largest concern seems to be coming from the Commissioners initially wanted to work on hospitality businesses, bars and restaurants, and we decided to broaden it and just do work with everybody at one time. But that does seem to be a trend, that hospitality-related businesses are concerned, of course, especially since football. And then the other concern is there is a misunderstanding that if you did receive any sort of other CARES Act funds, that you aren't eligible, and that simply is not the case. Now, it was due to these Commissioners that they changed that, because originally, I think that's where the miscommunication came out, that it was just for people who have not received any, but that is not the case. And I don't know, Commissioner Higgins, I don't know if you want to mention anything about that piece.
Yeah, the original Department of Community and Economic Development guidance was very much about prioritizing businesses that had received no grants up to that point. But myself, my fellow Commissioners, and a number of other Commissioners across the state, and I believe the Lodging Association pushed back against that, because for a lot of companies, they've run through that PPP and idle grant money a long time ago. So when the Commissioners and the lodging groups pushed back, DCD said, "Well, okay, you need to prioritize the businesses that haven't received it." And so most counties have interpreted that, that there'll be two rounds of checks. The first round will go out to businesses that did not receive any federal grants to this point, but there'll be a second round of checks to businesses that did. And I think in our case, the difference will be maybe two or three weeks.
Any better idea after the application process or application time is closed, the timetable, how fast that checks will be going out?
Sure. So we are hoping so. We, again, we have been really lucky and fortunate to be working with the Small Business Development Center. So they are going to be getting the information, and they're asking us for about a two-week process to go through and vet the applications, because there are still, you know, there's a lot of documents to upload and such. So, and then when that, so that would be, you know, the end of September, and then the final decision goes to the, our Board of Commissioners. And so I think we will probably make some of the decisions, they will make some of the decisions, and we will get the checks out. I would say early October timeframe, and please...
First batch, anyway.
Thank you. Yeah, the first batch of checks will go out in that, and then we'll have other rounds of checks. But I just want to make really clear, this was one thing, again, that was misunderstood last week. We're talking about batches of checks, but we are not talking about different rounds of this application. So we may open it back up, but we don't know that, you know, depending upon how it goes. So I'm just asking and urging you all, don't wait. You know, go ahead, please, and apply for this Friday, September 11th at 5:00 PM for the business application, because, you know, why not? It's, you know, it may take a little bit of time, but it might prove to be very, very prudent, because the Commissioners are very, very dedicated to helping out small businesses. Of the 14.6 million, $6 million went into this pot. So please, apply.
To that end briefly, you know, there could be businesses now, we've heard that, and there's potential, just potential, that Penn State could be moving online, either temporarily or fully at some point this week or in the coming weeks. If that's the case, there could be businesses out there that maybe right now are not extremely hurting, but if more students leave even potentially, there could be the need there. Is that something, you know, that you'd urge businesses to consider even having that longer-term approach to things?
That's a great question. I think, so we, on the application, we're looking at funds or, excuse me, revenues and such from July 1st through, excuse me, March 1st through July 31st. But we also have a blank space where people could say, "This is where I think my additional losses would come in," so without football, or if students' services do go online. So, you know, all I would say is it does not harm to apply. If you feel that there is a current need or a future need, apply. And I don't know if Commissioners would want to comment anymore on that.
I think, Evan, that's why we're remaining flexible with the potential of having additional conversations about additional availability for funds later in the year, because we want to recognize that things may change here. But the key thing is, takeaway is apply, and if there's another round, potentially, we can't guarantee that, we can have that conversation. But the most important thing is to apply, get the application in now.
And there would be, just to understand... Or there would be considerations made on, I guess, an open-ended portion of, you know what I mean, in relation to that, correct?
As of right now, there's one grant round. It's going to end on Friday. So from business standpoint, get your application in. But again, things may change on the ground, and there may be other conversations.
You folks are required to distribute the money by the end of the year?
Yeah, I mean, from our standpoint, it really is, not only do we want to distribute it, we want it spent. So...
They're not required to spend it by the end of the year. You're just required to...
No, they are. Yeah.
Oh, they are? Okay.
It needs to be out the door from a business standpoint. And that's why if they can document that they've had lost revenue from March 1st of July 31st, they can just, they can automatically, that's spent from the grant standpoint. But if they're looking to outlay it for additional costs, that's where it gets tricky. So if they can document it as lost revenue, we're all good to go.
And whatever we don't spend, we have to turn back, and that's one of the challenges. They, the turnback dates toward the end of the year, so we have a finite amount of time to get this money distributed and to get it spent, so we don't have to turn that in. But the upside of that is if there are counties that do not spend all their money, that money goes back into a pool and redistributed out again. So there's the opportunity to go for a second round of funding if there's any available.
I know, obviously, the businesses are what we're talking about right now, but are there any other entities in terms of, you know, mentioned education, municipalities, et cetera, that maybe pose a difficulty in the timeline of getting it out and spent by the end of the year? Any, any other, you know, things that come to mind that maybe it would be difficult there?
For all the entities we've talked to and all the different, specific organizations throughout the county, everyone has said they have needs. So I don't think there's going to be an issue or any specific types of organizations that are going to have any hesitancy to spend the money. I think they're going to be able to get it out the door. And the nice thing is this is happening in every corner of the country. This money has been distributed, and especially here in the Commonwealth. So, for example, if you're a nonprofit, you can tap into other nonprofit organizations across the country and see, well, how are you spending the money? You know, and so I think there's going to be a lot of collaboration that comes out of this. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, as always, Mary Kay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, and speaking of a nonprofit that's key to our community and is extraordinarily impactful and has been so for a number of years now, is the Jan Marie Foundation, and we are honored to have Marissa with us today. And we're going to talk a little bit about proclaiming September 2020 as Suicide Awareness Month, and specifically, the 10th as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Day. So the floor is yours, Marissa. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for your continued support of Janet Marie Foundation and the cause of suicide prevention. As you know, in June 2011, I lost my sister, Jana, to suicide. She had battled depression for much of her life, and during that time, she had just gone down a deep, dark journey to a hole that she felt she couldn't escape and was in immense emotional pain. And, but she was so much more than that. She was somebody who had a vibrant personality and a smile that would brighten any room that she walked into. She was creative and artistic and won awards for her abilities. She had an unwavering commitment to helping others. And when we talk about suicide prevention, we often see that, where there's somebody who, from the outside looking in, seems to really have it all. But when we start to get to know them more, and as they get more and more comfortable and start stripping off some of the different masks they're wearing, we see that there's another story hidden underneath. And that's really what Suicide Prevention Month does. It allows us to have these conversations that are often met with silence, and allows us to break down some of the different barriers and let people know that it's okay to not be okay. It's okay to reach out for help. We have amazing resources here in Center County and collaborations of organizations that really work together to ensure the safety of everyone. And it's okay to reach out and ask somebody, "Are you okay?" It's okay to listen to them and to really hear what's going on and to support them through that journey as they find that road of healing and recovery. And so we thank you for proclaiming once again September as Suicide Prevention Month. As you know, right after this, at 12:00, we will be at the Belfort Courthouse in the stairs outside for a suicide prevention rally that will also be streamed through Facebook, and that is hosted by the Center County Suicide Prevention Task Force. So like I said, that collaboration of organizations coming together. And then we have some exciting announcements during that event. And then on September 10th is Worldwide Suicide Prevention Day, and Janet Marie Foundation will once again host our annual Evening of Hope Healing and Remembrance. And that event also will be held online through a virtual platform of Facebook. And so we encourage everyone to not only step up today for suicide prevention, but every, every day, every week, every month, every year for making sure that our friends, our neighbors, and our loved ones are safe and know the different resources that are available. Thank you.
Absolutely, Marissa. Thank you so much. And we're going to be there physically distanced, of course, at the courthouse. And we were really fortunate to have such a nice day for it. It's going to be a beautiful day to celebrate something that's really important to get the word out, even more so during these difficult times. So thank you for all the work you're doing. But any other comments before we...
Marissa, are you having a nice socially-distanced fundraising event? Is it this upcoming weekend?
We are. So on September 19th, we have a fundraising event. It's Jana's Drive-In Diner. So we hosted one in July, and it was met with a lot of success and a lot of, just a request to host it again, because it's something different and something unique. So you can come in your car. We're out at the Nittany Mall on September 19th from 5:00 to 8:00. You stay in your car the whole time. We'll provide a menu. You put it on your dashboard when you're ready to order. Janet Marie Foundation volunteers will be around to collect the menu and deliver food from food trucks directly to your car. There's vegetarian and gluten-free options as well as the other menu choices. And then there'll be live entertainment. So Ram Alama is going to be performing, as well as Karen Dixon and Tommy Wareham. So it's a really fun, different kind of event, all socially distant. You stay in your car the whole time, which makes it really fun and something to build connections.
What part of the mall parking lot will you be in?
It's near Entrance C, so kind of in between Planet Fitness and Dunham's, that area. So, yeah.
And again, the events today, you have the courthouse, so...
Yes.
Again, we'll see you there shortly.
Thank you.
Have the proclamation with us as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All you do.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll look for a motion.
A motion to adopt proclamation number 19 of 2020, proclaiming September as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, and September 10th as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Day.
Gladly second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation. Any further discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you again, Marissa. We'll see you soon. Thank you.
See you at the bin.
Okay, moving into contracts, we'll welcome up Norm Spackman to discuss the 911 Emergency Communications Agreement we have before us. Good morning, Norm.
Good morning. This contract is for another regional project with Southern Allegheny's 911 Cooperative. This contract is with the Association of Public Communications Officials, or APCO, for call-taking protocol software for police, fire, and EMS. This software will help us meet the new Pima regulations requirements. Call-taking protocols will provide specific call-taking questions and directions for the dispatcher for each incident type. Good news from the update from the agenda item requests, we were able to work with Pima to help get some additional funding, so this project will be completely funded by grant money.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. More any feedback on this? Hearing none, we look for a motion.
Motion to add the agreement with APCO to next week's consent agenda.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you, Norm. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to be joined now via the phone by Chad Joyce. Hi, Chad.
Hello, how are you guys doing today?
Good, thank you.
Yes, so today I have a memorandum of agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of State to provide Albert Network security sensor to our infrastructure. It'll just be another layer of protection that'll help alert us should there be an issue going on. The agreement will start once the Board approves it and will be made and effective as long as it is available to the county. And at this point, there is no cost for the agreement.
Excellent. Thanks, Chad. And typically, when we see the Department of State, we think about elections. Is this going to give us better security when it comes to our elections office?
Yes, it provides an additional alert and monitoring system on our overall network and specifically on the elections network, and we're hoping to get this up and running before the election in November.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much, Chad. Thank you. Any other questions, comments on this?
I actually have one, Chad. What, I guess, what does this, without getting into the nuts and bolts and whatever technical confidential information, but what does this system do that we don't already have? I'm just curious. What, you say another layer. What does that mean?
Yeah, so a complement system we have in place, I think the biggest advantage is DCAP and the state are trying to get as many counties on this as possible prior to the election, so there will be greater insight should there be more of a statewide type of incident going on that we'll be able to triage quicker if they notice, like, a couple counties are reporting incidents or having incidents.
Okay. No, I think, I think there's a benefit there. If other counties are seeing attacks and can be made aware of it, you know, for example, if we're the first and we can let other counties know, I think it's a benefit. But anything else that it provides, Chad? Is there any other additional layers of security?
Not really. It's really just a monitoring, and we'll alert us should there be an issue. It doesn't provide, like, proactive protection, but it'll let us know immediately, and then we can take the measures necessary should there be something going on.
Okay, all right. And again, it's a no-cost agreement with the state. Any other questions, comments on this?
Thanks again, Chad, for all your help on the small business grant application and working with the Penn State SBDC.
Do that. Happy to help.
Okay. All right, hearing no further questions, we'll look for a motion.
Motion to add the memorandum of agreement with the Department of State to next week's consent agenda.
Will second that.
Seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Thank you, Chad. Have a good one.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to welcome up Natalie Cormier to discuss some of our contract denims and renewals. Good morning, Natalie.
Morning. So for items one through six, I'm just going to highlight number one, and then two through six are the same. So number one is our contract denim with Oasis Life Care. So we're adding an additional $10,000 to this contract, and this funding will directly come out of our 1920 retained earnings that we received through our Human Services Block Grant. So we're just about to finalize that plan to the state, which will be before you in two weeks probably. But this funding is coming out of it. This is providing us with a psychiatrist to assist us with our involuntary outpatient commitments, our IOCs, as we call them, which has been a big area of interest for our advisory board and for the public as well, is to make sure that we have a psychiatrist available. So this is a collaboration that we're doing with Oasis to do that, and this $10,000 is to provide that funding for that psychiatrist to be available for us. And so that's why we're taking it out of retained to make sure that we have the funding for the entirety of the fiscal year, since the five-month budget still stays in place.
That's for mental health emergency services, then?
Yes, so it's for outpatient commitments that we do, and we clarify that under mental health crisis services for that. And so it allows us to do our hearings, to provide that immediate, sometimes long-term need for individuals. Yep. And so contracts two through six are standard contracts that we have for, you know, intellectual disabilities. It's our housing supports, Eagle Ridge and Eagle View, Penn State Psychological Clinic and Community Integrations. Those contracts total $222,583, with the county share being $10,261. And as a reminder, this is five months' worth of funding in our contracts. And then item seven is our fiscal year report, 1920, for the Department of Drug and Alcohol. So this report is showing a total of $1,797,997.75, which is all the funding that we receive, whether that's PCCD money, our Human Services Block Grant, our federal SOARs money that we talk about sometimes in terms of opium... our federal SOARS money that we talk about sometimes in terms of opioid treatment, case management, outpatient and inpatient. This is all the ways that we show Department of Drug and Alcohol how we fund substance abuse services, student assistance program, whatever the case may be. So this fiscal report encompasses all that funding and highlights that. Of note, it's slightly higher than last year. And that depends on the federal funding that we receive through the SOARS initiative for heroin and opioid, as you know, that we've received. So it's a, you know, we really highlight to them how we spend it administratively, how we spend it for certain areas of revenue and expenses. You know, we highlight all of that in our report. Kathy Arbogast and our SAM staff do a great job of completing this in a short turnaround time. But it's important for us to note what we're able to bring into this county to really provide substance abuse, scambling, all those necessary prevention and treatment services. That's the report.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Any questions on the first six or the other drug and alcohol item?
No.
Okay. All right. We look for a motion for that first one.
Motion to add mental health, intellectual disability, early intervention, drug and alcohol items one through six to next week's consent agenda.
Will second that.
Seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried and we'll look for the approval as well.
Motion to approve the submission of the fiscal year 2019 to 2020 report to the Pennsylvania Department of Drug and Alcohol.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our consent agenda, we'll do a motion for those three items.
Motion approved today's consent agenda.
Will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Margaret, we'll turn it over to you for an administrator's report.
Thank you. Two items this morning. I wanted to let you know that the budget packets for the county's 2021 budget were distributed to department heads and elected officials on Friday. This kicks off what we refer to as our budget season. The packets included instructions for our department heads and elected officials to compile their draft and proposed budgets for 2021. They have about three weeks to do that this year. And then at that point, our Director of Finance, Tom Martin, will go through them. And then we'll start discussions with the Board of Commissioners about funding and what that budget looks like for next fiscal year. And also to let you know that the letters were distributed on Friday to all of our 35 municipalities announcing the application process and period for the liquid fuels applications. So we should be hearing back from many of the municipalities later this month.
Excellent. Thank you, Margaret, very much. Thank you. All right, moving into the check run. Commissioner Higgins will turn over to you.
We have a check, smaller-than-usual check run in the amount of $527,652.64. I've chosen for check of the week Grove Printing Incorporated on Raspberry Lane here in Belfont/Better Township. Almost drove by there when I went out to see the plane landing at the Belfont Airport. I saw you there, Gary, for the 100th anniversary of the U.S. Air Mail. Yep, and of course, of course, the first U.S. Air Mail plane landed in Belfont from a trip from New York City. So like to congratulate Grove Printing and thank them for their service to the county. Unfortunately, the check was only $172, so very reasonable amount. Would like to make a motion to approve the check run dated September 4th.
Will second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the check run. Any further discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Chris.
All right, we have 109,126 registered voters in Center County as of this morning. That's down 91 registrants from last report. We have 45,946 Democratic registrants, 148 Green Party, 680 Libertarian, 14,711 No Affiliation, and 43,198 Republican voters. Again, which, when you add the 4,443 minor party folks in there, gives you your total. Of that 4,443, I would like to mention the Independent Party, which is D-A-N-T. There'll be a number of them over the next few weeks with different versions of spelling. And there are 116 Independent registrants in Center County. I would also like to recognize our partners at Walker Township Municipal Building, who allow us to use their facility as, I guess, Walker West Number 84 Precinct, which is one of our larger ones in the valley. And there are 1,846 registered voters in the last election. And there were 825 ballots cast, which led to a voter turnout percentage of 44.69%. Again, we want to thank the folks in Walker Township for allowing us to use their facility. But the folks that get it done in Precinct Number 84, Patricia Horn is the judge of elections. Joseph Ray is the minority inspector. Kevin Smith is the majority inspector. And the clerks are Elizabeth Stone, Susan Zimmerman, Janice McDowell, Deborah Kerstetter, and Susan Smith. And we want to thank them for their help. And I guess we'll be seeing you in just a few weeks at this point as we gather up all the last-minute preparations for the November general election. So there you have it.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. Any executive sessions for us to report, Margaret?
Executive session.
Okay. All right, we have the balance of our schedule there and our meetings. Any questions from the press today?
I hinted, obviously, earlier about to move more direct towards the CARES Act funding, but just in general, obviously, from a financial standpoint, is there talk and preparedness amongst the commissioners for if Penn State were to go either this week or in the coming weeks fully online? And, you know, in terms of just being prepared from a county standpoint to help with whatever businesses or other entities may voice concerns or things that may arise from a county level?
As we know from COVID-19, it's, one day is different from the next. And so it's going to be difficult for us to pinpoint on a calendar the best day to put the money out. I think from our standpoint, getting it out is the most important thing at this point, just getting it to businesses. But if there would be a decision by the university to go to a virtual learning platform, we will, you know, we will do the best we can in terms of getting resources and funding out there to different organizations that are affected by that. But do want to highlight something Dr. Anthony Fauci said over the weekend, or might have been late last week, which was encouraging universities not to send their students home due to the fact that since if the virus is spreading on campus amongst students, it's best for the university to handle that locally. And Penn State has a operation in place. We have Mount Nittany as well. So that's his recommendation at this point. So we're in that position where there's, you know, discussion about that. So, but again, we will see fit. If funding can get out there, we'll get it out there as soon as we can.
From a safety standpoint, the follow-up to that is, and I know this is more of a question for Penn State, but just throwing it out there. And that is, if they go fully remote, how do you keep the students from going back home again or even going to places where they could further spread the virus? How, is there any way that you could think of that could ensure that they don't go home?
It would only be if they closed campus. If they closed campus and they would have no more students living in the dorms, you would have about 10,000 individuals that would be either staying in the community, maybe off-campus. We do know that apartment buildings are not seeing the type of occupancy that they had typically. So there is a potential that they could stay here in the community by living off-campus. But again, the vast majority of them would return to wherever their non-campus home would be. And again, that would be something the university has done before. They did that in the spring. They had to move into a virtual standpoint. So we will, we would follow that and see how they would go about working that.
We were last year, last week, you said you had a conference call coming up with DOH. Did they shed any light, any new information, trends, in particular about COVID cases here in Center County?
The thing that we asked them was, the very fine point is, can we get data that segments the 1680 ZIP code? That's where the high growth of cases has been. We know the campus ZIP code, where that's at. But can we get 16801? Can we get the data sparse so we can appreciate if that's majority student-living areas or if that's in the non-student community? And the Department of Health, at that point, was not able to provide data that shows the difference. So at this point, we still have to say to the community, if you're in that 16801 ZIP code, the physical distancing, the masking, the hand hygiene, staying home when you're sick is the best thing that you can do at this point. But we, for the time being, will not have access to that to better allow the community to understand that. So if the Department, and we're encouraging the Department of Health to please work on something to that effect so we can have a better understanding of how the COVID-19 is spreading in that ZIP code. But, so at that point, that was the main ask. And at this point, they don't have the data to support that.
So cases reported at Penn State don't necessarily add to Center County's total?
No, they are. They are.
They do? Okay.
If they get tested on campus and they get tested through a university-approved entity, that, those cases are then returning here when it comes to reporting. Due to this two-day reporting over a week's timeframe the university is doing versus the DOH doing it on a daily basis, there is some case overlap that's occurring. And so we also mentioned that to the Department of Health on the conference call to say, is there any way that we can have a little bit better understanding of the gaps that might exist there? And again, they did not have the data that they could supply that at that point or the means to supply it, but they're aware of it. And hopefully, we can get a little bit better understanding of the numbers.
Since the trend, two weeks in of classes, do you personally, your office, are you getting calls from others elsewhere in the county about the increase in cases on campus?
Yes, yes, we are.
What are you hearing from those folks?
The question has always been, at what point does the university make the decision to go virtual? And we've explained to people, again, this recommendation from somebody I think we all trust, Dr. Fauci, saying, "Treat the virus at the university rather than spreading it at home." So that's an important thing to understand and how that would potentially help our community out by getting individuals that might have COVID-19 out of our community. But then what does it do to the places they're returning to? And so COVID-19 affects us as a country. And so we have to be very mindful of that. And that's something the university has to take into account. So, but we are hearing that individuals have questions about those increases.
So the, on Friday, basically, the Department of Health had told us that they thought that they were at least a day or two behind, this is approximate, but a day or two behind Penn State's numbers. Is that, did they tell you something similar in the sense that because the university, they had not yet been able to catch up with Center County's numbers that they reported they were two Penn State's numbers? That Penn State may be at least a day or two ahead? Is that what you had heard?
We didn't, that specific conversation didn't come up in terms of that, that lag or that timeline. We didn't really go in depth when it comes to that. But the way you're saying it, that makes sense.
Any, would you care to, I guess, comment that, would you like to see Penn State be a bit more constant in terms of daily updates and what that could provide to the county, just in terms of contextually? Because the big question a lot of people want to know is, and we'll never have 100%, you know, certainty on this with accuracy, but what percentage of Center County cases are from Penn State students/staff? And by not having the daily numbers, you know, it's tough.
The one takeaway we had from the DOH conference call was that the DOH was going to reach out to the team at Penn State who's putting those numbers together to see if they can have a little bit more collaboration than they already are, or again, just try to marry those numbers. And so if they do have that conversation, you know, there could be a lot of promise coming out of them having an understanding about what this looks like. And so I know the university on Friday did release a statement saying, "Here's what the data says. Here's a little bit of context about why there's not complete overlap when we report the numbers." But the Department of Health also putting out something that would explain why we're seeing that variance would be, I think, extraordinarily helpful. So again, they're working on it and hope they would be able to marry those numbers. Sure. Okay, all right. Seeing no questions on the call, we will then look for a motion to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Motion to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:43.
Seconded to recess, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, everybody.